Oh, the camera is right up.
It's in the ceiling.
Yeah.
And the mic easily picks up everything in the room, so. Welcome, everybody. And time is now six thirty, March seventeenth. Select Board meeting will start as per usual with pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the new rule call of board members. Dave Hemingway, Chair of the Select Board.
Marla Heron.
John Clark, newest member.
I always wanted to say just somebody.
And so, welcome, everybody. The standard rules and procedures that I've been adopting is that we follow classroom rules. I don't think you'll have to worry about interrupting yourself. So, that should be good. Announcements? Do we have particular announcements?
I don't have very much, but I just wanted to bring to your attention. The next Select Board meeting is April seventh. So, instead of two weekly meetings, it'll be three weeks to stay in our first and third Monday schedule.
You're gonna be alright?
I don't know. We're just gonna miss each other so much.
Valid point.
Other quick announcements for the town. While there isn't much snow out, the winter parking ban is still in effect. It is mud season, and most of the roads are now posted. So, don't expect to be running heavy loads and getting heavy, huge deliveries. And if you are wanting to do fires, make sure you either got your permit here at town meeting or head up to the fire station on a Wednesday meeting night and pick up your permit there. Because even a small campfire or like a solo fire in your backyard needs to have a fire permit. Any other announcements? Alright, that moves us on to the annual restructuring of the Board. This is something that we always do after the elections as we pick up new board members in theory. And this year, we have. So, welcome.
Thank you.
There are a few things that are usually looked at. There's, of course, the chairperson. That doesn't have to be the same the entire period. At any point in time, anybody on the Board can make a motion to change the chairperson to somebody else. The other thing is the ex officio for the planning Board. In the past, that's usually been designated to the newest member. And Marla has been serving that way for the past couple of years. And then, a new one, in light of recent actions, is the Fire Department liaison. My personal feeling is that rather than sending you to the planning Board, that we would make you the Fire Department liaison and allow Marla to continue over at the planning Board. However, the planning Board is the easiest and quickest way to find out where the majority of the rules and regulations for town are and come from and how that works. So, that's again, one of the reasons why the newest person is often there. So, that's kind of the thoughts. Those are the things that you have in front of us to take care of. And anything else. So, are there any particular positions or other things that you'd like to consider for restructuring of the Board?
I mean, I'm fine continuing. I feel, I feel John's got some really good, you know, back experience on the Fire Department side of things. But you'd say, I mean, I mean-
No, I think-
From the-
Security services.
From the security rules.
I think upsetting the apple cart, you know, I think, I think things are going well in town. That was experienced for Purge on Saturday. Even working with planning Board, if you don't mind just to, just to sit in the background and listen to what they discuss. I don't mean to stick my two cents with them. But I might sit in on a couple of Board meetings, just as Dave mentioned, for the educational experience, but not, that's your, your gig, if you know what I'm saying. I enjoy the Fire Department. I enjoy the Police Department. I enjoy, you know, I get along, seem to get along pretty well with the people in the Fire Department, men and women there. I think, if I might, I think listening on Saturday, I think, as I mentioned, standing up here, working with them on leadership, assisting their leadership, collaborative, cooperative, moving forward, helping them to attain some of the goals that they're trying to attain. I went over that. As you people did, I went over that rant. I mentioned to one of the members who wrote it, and I've done a couple of rants. I think some of us all have. And it's very well written. And I'm glad to see that's been done. So, no, I'm good. I agree with your recommendations. I'm good. If you've, I think we agree that you remaining as Chairman is quite happy. I'm quite happy with that. I take my colleague over to the left here, or our colleague. And again, you know, you two, as I mentioned off camera, want to mention off camera. Now, I'm looking to be educated a bit too. I mean, none of us know everything.
There is, so if you wanted to be a little bit more official towards the planning Board instead of just showing up to listen, there is actually another position that is, has commonly been assigned. I gave it up because some people had complained that I had too much authority in town. And that's certainly not what I wanted. And so, there's the ex officio to the planning Board, but there's also an alternate ex officio to the planning Board. And just like a normal and an alternate member, if the ex officio is not there, then the alternate may vote for them if they are there. And just like on the planning Board itself, if you are either a member or ex officio, or the alternate, or the alternate ex officio, you are allowed to participate in the discussions as opposed to only if you're a voting member. So, you are allowed to participate if you were doing that.
But I can help you out with that. But again, I don't want to step on your terms. I mean, necessarily, I mean, I don't want to, I'm the new guy, and I, you know, whatever you need me to do. If you like me to do it, I'm happy to do that. And if you need me to sit in for you. What I want to be though, to be is very collaborative, very open, very transparent, if that makes sense to you. I mean, I think that's important to this business.
Absolutely.
If you want to be able to sit in for her, then you would probably want that alternate ex officio.
Okay, whatever you recommend.
Because otherwise, you would show up there and listen, but you wouldn't necessarily be able to say anything, and you definitely could never vote, even if she's not there.
Whatever you think is best.
Alright.
May we have a motion for who's going to be Chairman, so we can have an argument?
I make a motion for Dave Hemingway to remain Chair of the Select Board.
Can I immediately sit in?
Well, that's an awful shocker, isn't it?
Next.
All in favor?
Aye. You know, the Staples used to have that easy.
Yes.
We're not throwing you out there.
Well, you need to make a motion for the planning Board one.
Yeah, I think for-
So, I move to make Marla the ex officio to the planning Board, and John, the alternate ex officio to the planning Board.
Second up. Can you do that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. What happened?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the fire, you, is that a liaison?
Yeah. That, do we-
Why not? I mean, I think-
Sure.
You're on a roll.
Do you want to go for it?
I make a motion to make John Clark, oh, that word. Fire Department liaison.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, alright, annual restructuring of the Board is finished. Again, that's just, we decided that we have, that's kind of our policy to do it after each election. None of these are set in stone. They can be changed at any point in time with a motion second and voted by the Board. Appointments?
I do have a question.
Yes.
What about the zoning Board? Because I know Dave sat on that. What happened?
The ZBA does not have a ex officio.
Oh, ZBA, sorry. Okay, okay, fair enough.
She just happened to be on the Board.
Okay.
And then was also-
And she still is.
And she still is.
Gotcha. Alright, this was, not that you would ever forget that, but I just thought, oh, an ask.
Yeah, the planning Board's the only one that I'm aware of that we have an ex officio to.
Okay, fair enough.
Alright, that would move us to appointments and old business, neither of which has anything listed. Did you have anything particular to bring up there before?
There were no appointments. Old business, I think we're gonna fit Heather in.
Yeah. So, let's go ahead and do that. Come on down and give us a brief word.
You can do it.
Yep.
My name's Heather Fairchild. I'm Fort Tyler Road. Probably last fall, maybe late summer, I sent an email to Dana requesting to be, to attend a Select Board meeting and requesting to see if I could get permission to metal detect on town properties. In the state of New Hampshire, you really don't need permission to go on public lands. However, it's, it's very nice to have something in your pocket to explain to the general public who may come up to me and ask questions. My idea was to metal detect some of the properties on, in the town. And for lack of a better word, my metal detector picks up a lot more litter than anything else. But what I'd like to do is show to either the select people or the Historical Society what I find. And they can keep whatever they want, and I'll toss the rest in the dump or wherever in my collection of miscellaneous items. But what I was asking for is potentially get, get an email and or a letter stating such so that I wouldn't get any pushback from people in town or who have just saw me. It's happened before. I don't usually have any problems with people. They just are very, very curious. But I do follow the rules in terms of making sure I fill in all my holes. Making sure if I find something, I take it out instead of leaving it behind and causing problems. You wouldn't believe what you find with a metal detector. Mostly really bad beer cans, but- But in terms of the litter, I'll be taking that out as well, so. That was pretty much why I was here.
Always thank you, because that's pretty cool.
Pretty much.
You know, finding something good or bad.
Yeah.
So, thank you for coming to us. Any questions or comments?
I'm very much supportive.
I think it's awesome.
Like, we talked about it briefly back then as well, though I think we were unable to make it in before. And basically, the Board then was in favor of this as a concept as well. What do we need in order to make this-
I think it would be nice to have a motion on that. And if you would like me to write a letter, I can do that.
Okay.
If it would be possible, if, if you do not want to end up with the materials in front of you at your next Select Board, have to wait for the ground to frost.
Very sporty, yes.
But various meetings. If you want to include within that how you would like me to proceed if I do find something, whether it goes to the Historical Society or to you, or to both, I think.
Okay.
I'd feel like the Historic Society. Not that wouldn't be fun.
Yeah, I think it would kind of depend on what it is.
Right.
I can send you photos if-
You know, and if it's a body, it's a police department. You know, if it's a shoe, trash.
Old bully on. Things like that.
Yeah. Money, maybe us, not to start getting involved.
I think it would, the process, it would probably make the most sense to have a photo sent over to Dana of stuff. And if it seems like it's interesting, then it can come in to, to be seen by us and were suggested to be donated to the Historic Society after that. Am I thinking of that incorrectly? Does anyone else have a better idea?
I completely agree.
No, I think that's awesome.
I agree with you.
It might just be nice if you find something neat, you know, to share. Not just with the Historic Society, with the public in a sense, coming here.
Sometimes it takes a little bit of time to do a little research as to what it is that I found.
Yeah.
Because sometimes it's not exactly clear. There are old buttons out there that could be as old as, you know, Civil, the Civil War.
Right.
Versus something that was last, you know, two weeks ago, so.
Right.
So, it's, it's-
So, once you find it, you actually then look into what it is? Oh, that's really neat.
Then I use the Webster Historical Document to help me out with what activities happened in certain areas within town, that sort of thing.
You know, I think you'd be eloquently right in not to write it. I know Dana's very good at writing this, but something along the lines of trusting in the judgment of the explorer, the eloquence of the items found, or value of the items found. Trusting you to be in contact with Dave, Dana, as we mentioned, to me, sounds, I think that's great.
Appreciate it.
Alright, so I would move that we accept and the offer for metal detection and provide a letter as has been discussed.
Yeah, all in favor? Yeah, that's okay.
Either. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
His name's shorter.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. That's really, that's really cool. Of course, now he's got something else he can put on his job description. Review of links found.
Give Dana a, give Dana a device, and he can come out there with it.
Right.
Well, I called him the other day. I said to Heather, a Geiger counter.
Yeah. I told him, if I found any radioactive materials in the town, I'm not going anywhere near it.
Great, that moves us on to goal setting in new business.
Yeah, that was, I had spoken with Dave a little bit about this. I've spoken to John about it. I don't think I've spoken to Marla because she was keeping me in secret.
Oh, okay. Well, I wouldn't do that, Dana.
But I think it's good to plan for the fall, for this year of what goals that, well, what department heads would like to reach and what goals Select Board members would like department heads to work on.
I know why you didn't give me much time. You were afraid I was gonna come up with something weird.
I was afraid of that. That's why, you know. But, and at any rate, I think it's a, I think it's a worthwhile thing to do. And knowing that you're not going to achieve every, all of your goals. So, if you have four or five goals for the year, if you make a few, it's better than not making any. So, I'd like to talk about this at the next meeting when department heads are here. And I'm gonna give them a heads up, if you so instruct me to, of what-
Our goals would be.
One of our discussion would be.
Yeah.
And if you had goals, you can certainly let me know if you want me to mention to them now or if you have one for Russ or myself, preferably Russ. Anyway. But I think it's, moving forward, I think it'd be, you know, we're trying all the time to make this a professional operation and-
So, I will state that I have three off the top of my head, and they're all for different people in areas. The first one is one that we've kind of said was going to be happening for many years. And it had work started on it, but never got there. And that's to finish the access road and location area up on the hill behind the safety building for the new sand shed. The second one, which is probably mostly for you, but I know that, like, we've made lots of progress towards it, is finalizing the ADA compliance of downstairs access. I think it's only like a toilet and a railing at this point, but we should finish off that low hanging fruit so it's ready to go. The last one is one that I've intended to do and ran out of time every single time that I've been here to do it. And that is to work on having a actual full-fledged and proper cybersecurity policy. And then also going through our equipment for age and updates and stuff like that, which in theory, our IT companies would be doing. But we've had challenges getting that information from any and all IT companies that we've had, so.
Well, that, one of my goals, and Russ said the same thing, is we need to consider the server replacement.
Yeah.
And also to resolve with the IT company of if we are getting what we have to have as far as backups and all that stuff. Russ has taken courses in cybersecurity, so he's knowledgeable and-
Trying to get some of the information, and he's helping.
And so is Dave, so I mean, that works out.
So, should we have, should we, meaning staff and the elected officials, have a cybersecurity basic course, so we have some additional updated information? I mean, there's so much changing every day with this, and every time I turn around, all I hear is someone in the town getting put on administrative leave or a town losing information. Is there something more? I'm looking at you two gentlemen. Is there something more-
I think-
That we could maybe do as a team?
Primax has some good tips on their website.
I was more thinking, the state, I think, offers some trainings that they can do for municipal staff.
Could you look into that?
Talk to them about it before the last training. And trying to, I might have to contact them again to get to more details on what the exact trainings are. And I think the other thing that would be very big is to develop a plan of action in the event that there was a cyber attack. And I think that's something that department heads of the Police Department, Fire Department should sit down and be like, what does it look like if we don't have computers for a couple of months? And we can't access any of our records? How will the town maintain itself and operate?
Well, some, some concerns were brought up about building access. And I, I, my background, I, accidents happen, I'll say that. And I would hate to see the town fall on the front page of, you know, WMUR at 5:00 AM in the morning, if you know what I'm saying. I think working as a team, working, us working together with you two gentlemen, getting something, you know, getting something easy to understand. Because not everybody's an IT professional. And applicable, and I think someone that comes to physical security too, we might want to take a look at that.
And I think the most important part in any cyber attack is the first few hours that you notice the attack going on and getting to the right people. So, you know how to stop it or how to track down where your breach happened and track where what's been impacted.
Part of that policy or procedure that you mentioned or want to be mentioned, so. And I totally support.
So, yes, I just threw myself under the bus, but that, that's one of my longstanding ones. So, hopefully, I can actually get to it this time.
Is it dual wheel?
I'm sorry.
Dual wheel, well, so.
Can I ask Russ a question? I had, before even getting sworn in, and I, I appreciate people coming up like all of us. I was asked a question, because I live up in the area, about the 127 Long Street rejuvenation. How, how is that sitting? And what's the timeline? Do you have any further information on that? The intersection of 127 and Long Street.
Updating Long Street and 127.
Oh, because that was with the DOT, and that was with the Central New Hampshire Planning Commission. I can ask Craig Tufts about that tomorrow, because the last it sat is they were gonna bring it up to the engineer for NHDOT, and I haven't heard anything from him since. But I have a meeting with them for the Tac Committee on Friday, and I'm gonna make a note of that right now.
If you would, Russ. And, and just a commentary. I think that's, I think that's a little more complicated than just putting up simple four stop signs.
Yeah.
It doesn't have the room that the intersection does up in Salisbury and- Capital Salisbury on 1-4, what am I trying to say? 4 and 127.
127.
That is a lot of room.
Remember, I was trying to put it in the Ten Year Road Program, but they thought the project was too small for the Ten Year Road Program. So, they're trying to come up with alternative solutions to get something maybe done quicker.
Which is appreciated. Police don't think I'm, I just, I've looked it up very often. I have some thoughts. I'm not an engineer, and I don't want to profess to be.
But I know Emmett's been complaining about it for a while, since I got here.
Rightfully so.
And then I'm at the Tac Committee, and I'm like, we're planning for it. So, I figured I'd call the engineers down there and have them come out and look at it.
And I think all, all hands, excuse my term, but Emmett and Fire Chief and Police Chief and maybe yourself that you're involved in, and Russ, I mean, people, people need to look at that intersection with a lot of insight, because I think there's some potentiality there.
But, I mean, it's not necessarily the exact same realm as, for example, setting speed limits, deciding whether a stop sign should or shouldn't exist. But that-
Excuse me.
That Road Hazard Committee, at least I think that was the name of it, they're, they're the ones that would make a lot of sense to get additional feedback from that with like, hey, let's put this as the weight of the town as a whole, saying, we think this makes a good sense as a plan, sort of thing.
Well, the big thing that's gonna be a holdup with that intersection is the state road. So, we have to work with the state on it.
Right, but that way, we could, we say, like, since we haven't heard anything, this is what we think would make sense as a starting point, like-
Yeah, I agree. And I think also, doing what you did on Closed Pin Bridge when you wanted to get that not taken off the list, showing up at their meetings and voicing concern is also a good, a good tactic to put in front of their mind.
And I think we can do that once we have a-
Where we're supposed to.
A plan that we want to say, hey, this is, this is a good way forward.
Right.
Sort of thing, so.
When that was a store, I watched, and I don't, and I also want to record, I don't want to inflict on any of the residents in the area. I think good planning and good engineering can be done without inflicting on the homes that sit in there. But with that being said, and that was a store, and obviously, I've lived there for nearly, well, we have for 30 years. I've seen cars come through there and nearly go into the store, you know what I'm saying? Just because there wasn't restrictions in there. Just, thank you.
So, the next meeting, we'll talk more goals.
Sounds good. Alright, that moves us on to scheduling the non-public minute review work session. For those that are on the Board, we're familiar with this, but roughly every year, shortly after the election cycle, we sit down to review at least the last year's worth of not just, not specifically non-public minutes, but sealed non-public minutes to decide whether they should remain sealed or not, whether the timeframe that they needed to remain sealed is no longer applicable, and things of that nature. The state has a requirement now, I believe, for us to keep kind of a log of when we looked at it and when it's not supposed to be anymore, or those sorts of things. And so, the less that we have, the better, to make it easier for documenting everything.
And the good news, you don't have very many.
We just, thankfully, we generally have not had a whole lot of sealed minutes for a while now. And hopefully, we can continue keeping it that way for the most part. When would people like to try and do that? That is a question mainly for the Board.
Dave, you're usually the one, you know, I mean, I'm always trying to get fired. So, if you want to put me somewhere I shouldn't be, then, you know. Yeah, you're usually the one that, I don't, I don't know if John's scheduled, but I, something where either later afternoon or morning, just because, so I don't have to leave.
Staff generally likes us to try to do it during the day as a workshop downstairs someplace.
Usually, it's Monday and Friday. I'm usually at the Sheriff's Department. And short of that, Thursday afternoon's late. We have, we're trading bloodhounds. But I mean, not to get off telling people about my concerns. But if we can schedule on Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday, as you mentioned, during the, the hours of operation. Hopefully, not in the upcoming week. I'd like to move maybe beyond the next Board meeting if we could. I'm saying maybe we might want to hear about some goals and other things. And some of the things we've talked about, or you folks have talked about prior to me coming here, might be able to add to some of those concerns.
Okay.
We're back Wednesday seventh.
And we could, in theory, meet Tuesday after, sometime after lunch on the eighth.
What's, what's too late for you, Dave? Because you're gonna, because you have-
I generally need to be back home by about four.
Okay, so is it like, is like two or three too late?
Depends on-
You're right, no.
No, I don't like to take that.
I don't think we have that many-
You don't.
Minutes, but yeah, if we did like two or 2:30 or something, that should be fine.
What do you want to do?
2:30.
Okay.
2:30 on Tuesday, the eighth.
2:30, sold.
Tuesday, eight, Tuesday, seven, right?
And then I think we have a planning Board meeting that night, too.
Oh, yay.
That's fine. I like the, the long marathon. That's fine, I like the, the long marathon meetings.
All right. That is now in my schedule. Um, so that takes care of that one.
That was fast. I'm still typing.
Oh, okay.
No, just go ahead, I'm just.
Which is then the, the last of the new business that's on our agenda is the fire department grant application.
The, this is a grant that the fire department has applied for, for the last few years. It is a fifty percent grant to reimburse for forest fire supplies. So in other words, the, the purchase would be made, the bill would be paid, and we would realize fifty percent of the cost once all the paperwork has been, has been sent in. Last few years, the board has appointed me to sign the grant on behalf of the town. And then I always usually assist with the paperwork as well. And so to, to have the grant, um, if you wanted me, and I don't necessarily need to, but I think it makes it easier for all the way around, if you were just to appoint me to be a signatory for the town on this, on this matter.
Now, one thing that I don't remember noticing on these from the past, and I don't know if it's new or not, and my question to you is, some of this mentions that we need to use GASP procedures. And I know that some things that's not really a big deal and other things it is. And so, A, is that new? And B, is that actually any sort of additional burden or overhead that we need to look into?
I didn't realize that it was new, because we've had this GASP program for a while now. It doesn't, for the items that they're buying, it really doesn't put any pressure on.
Perfect, that's a good catch, if you came in if you would please, what is the GASP?
Uh, government account.
Accountability standard, um, board is what GASP stands for. And it's more or less accounting methods and what accounting methods we have to adhere by. And we do adhere by those methods because as a municipality, we have to.
There are a couple instances that you'll see in, for example, the audit, where they always mention you should use this standard over here, sort of thing. One of the big ones is when talking about our compensated absences. For, for example, if one of the police officers retires and pay out and stuff like that. And their big thing is that they, they don't want calculations towards it with following all the standards. It's all using actuarials and everything else. And, you know, we don't want to pay to go have an actuary tell us that, okay, you're probably off by a hundred bucks. So that's why sometimes it, it can matter, other times it, it might not, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, many times because of our size and things, things don't fit quite right.
I knew it was some accounting thing there.
Yeah.
It's funny.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I would move to accept the grant as presented and make Dana the signatory.
I second.
Yep, sorry.
That's okay.
I present, whoever.
But we'll put it second.
I know, well, we like to move it along.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Any mini money, Mel.
All right.
Stretching Dana by the tone.
Um, I believe that then was correspondence, or is there any other new business for?
I have, I have no other new business.
All right.
And all I had for this correspondence was this letter that I was asked to send for the support of another grant that the town of Hopington is applying for, for the Septage Lagoon closure. Which would be nice if we got it. So I think that's, and this is the letter Neil and I worked together to draft this letter.
Speaking of, while it's not correspondence per se, um, is there any sort of correspondence from Neil's announcement? I know you've told me, but I don't know.
I have not seen anything other than what is on their website. And there is an ad in the municipal association's classified ads. They're looking for a town administrator. I have not talked to Neil since that. I really should give him, give him a call, but he is, you know this probably, he's moving to the school district in Peterborough, the Conval School District as their business administrator.
So we will unfortunately no longer get the institutional knowledge of Neil from Hopington.
Neil's been very helpful to me and I think he's done a really good job.
Always hard to fill shoes.
You know.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So hopefully we'll have some more information on both of those in the future, in the positive realm of things. That moves us, is that all for correspondence?
Um, maybe this is a time to bring up, Emmett was in today to see me and he brought in an agreement that I did not know existed for the ambulance service. And the agreement that I have expired in twenty thirteen. And so he, he thought that maybe there was a more current one, but I had never seen an agreement between the two towns. I think it's a great idea to have it. At your next meeting, the gentleman who is in charge of the ambulance service in Hopington, I believe his name is Jeff Yale, plans to come in and talk to you with, and Emmett will be here as well.
Perfect.
And then maybe we can draw up an updated service agreement.
Awesome.
Yes, that was.
I think that's great that he came in with that.
Yes, I do too.
And I'd like to say, I think it was public, so I can say that I believe, correct me if I'm wrong. There was some frustration on Saturday, but I think there were some things brought up, not pointing fingers at anyone, but we as a board and other department heads probably need to look at as we move forward. I think we can consistently be on a continuous improvement path.
Absolutely.
I don't look, I've said it publicly Saturday, I don't, studies are great, but you've got a lot of experience in this town, a lot of experience sitting here and a lot of experience with our department heads. I don't think we need to study, I think as collaborative adults, we can work together and help move things forward specifically with such things as that. I mean, how that got let down for twelve years and the board didn't ask for a review of that over here, not pointing fingers here.
No, no, absolutely.
It hadn't been brought up, we probably could have thought it existed.
Yeah.
And I do too, I never gave it a second thought until it was brought up.
So it was a good, it was, that was, that was a very productive part of Saturday's thing, because I think we all did go, oh, oh, yeah.
No productive things, productive things, as you all know, it's obvious for me to say, after you've been sitting here, but good productive things in small communities don't happen without a bit of dissonance. And productive dissidence is bad, sometimes it can be frustrating, but, you know, I, I don't want to be discomplimentary to people that are trying to do a good job and just put some things forward. Doesn't mean everything's right, doesn't mean everything's wrong, just means that you pick from the pile and say, hey, I'm glad, I'm glad Emmett brought that in, that's good to see.
Yeah, it's good that Jeff's coming and we're gonna get it taken care of and, and it was a good thing to be pointed out.
Exactly.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep. And, and one of the things that I'll say has been kind of a unofficial point of reckoning for our staff is that when I got here on the board and then when they got hired, almost nothing was a contract or a written agreement. Almost everything was just, oh, someone had a handshake someday in the past, that's just the way it's done.
Yeah, well, we just did.
And so, so the, the, the kind of unofficial, but, but major goal is that whenever something gets run into, they try to convert it into something that's a, a written contract or agreement. Obviously, we're still going to keep finding them, but.
Absolutely.
Hopefully it won't take metal detection in the past to do it, but.
Right, which you could, you don't know, you don't know what you might find. For somebody who's personally used the ambulance service twice in my twenty-one years here in town, I would love to see that updated.
You know, I, I had the experience, and it's not about me here, it's about all of us, but I had the experience of working with five excellent lawyers who passed all of them years until I semi-retired. I came from the public system, I, I, public sector, and I thought I knew a lot about everything, okay? None of us are experts who know everything about everything. But I got, I got one heck of a training period for eleven years and I will tell you, if it's not written, it doesn't exist. And you folks know that, I'm not telling you.
I know, but sometimes that's scary too, Dave. You know, I'm like, woo, we don't want, I want to know everything, right?
No, but you know what I'm saying, when it comes to contractual obligations and who's expected to do what? If there's not some type of document, you know, because that's what's going to happen, it's going to be that, they're going to start looking for that, where's the policy? And so I think Dana is a hundred percent correct, and I know you folks are supporting her, but and I think Emmett, Emmett is working hard to make sure all these things are trying to be done. And it's a lot of work and for volunteer fire department, but it's great to see, so it's good.
Yep.
Perfect.
Were you going to bring up, I know the money was approved for the code enforcement position, were you going to discuss that tonight or what could you? Or am I stepping ahead of you on that?
No, no, we might as well, I mean, if this is a good time, the budget passed, you probably knew that because you were there. And in the planning budget was the funds that were being, going to be used for the code officer. We need to, and it would have been nice if we'd done this before, but we didn't, but we really need to do a job description, which we're planning to more or less plagiarize from another town.
And that's basically what I did, is I looked up ones I liked.
So.
That's the way to do it.
And then we're going to need, as far as to discuss a little further, the, what you're interested in, the salary, the pay scale.
And the number of hours.
And the method, the number of hours, maybe, or things like that. Also, when we have that all put together, normally we advertise to the public, um, and.
My other question for that would be that making it an officer, what is the method or way that we're supposed to grant them authority for that? Like, do, do they actually get some sort of police-type authority that is different than police? Or is it only, like, how does that all work?
Zoning ordinance leaves code enforcement under the discretion of the select board, so I think you would need to grant your authority to the code enforcement officer.
So basically, it would be a motion once they're hired.
Yeah, I, I would agree. So, and I know that we may have one candidate for that position.
At, at what point is there contention or discussion or similar with? The board already has authority to do various things as code enforcement, but then an officer may have, especially if, for example, if it were a police officer that, that had been given that position. They may have the ability to act in ways that we couldn't. So how do those kind of lines fall? That's kind of my question.
That's kind of a legal question on that one.
Right.
But I would say that you would keep the two positions separate, and that if you're acting as the code enforcement officer, you're not acting as a law enforcement agent. For criminal law, you're doing zoning law, not criminal.
I think too, there's a philosophical approach, and I think, and I agree with you, Russ. I think there's a philosophical approach to it, and not that I know about, I think you heard me say that I've worked with the city of Concord. I think when you get into these, there has to be an educational format, there has to be an approachable educational format, educate the citizen. We're going in something here that's a new spectrum for our community. So it has to be an educational format, people who are doing things that require code, code structure, code, code ordinance, code look at. And then we maybe even need to look at what our ordinances say, and you two folks, Dana and Russ, would know more about that than me, because I take, need to take a look at that. We might need to enhance and update some of that stuff, much like the ambulance policy, you know? But you're getting someone in here that, you're beginning someone in here, be new to the people, so maybe some, some public education on that. Updating, maybe, maybe in those ordinances, make them public, put them up online if they aren't already, some people know them. And working with folks and then looking at collaboration, how do we help people to get to that point? And then, you know, you don't go out, and I know you didn't say this, please don't get me wrong.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You, you don't go out and hit people on the head the first day.
Right, right.
And without, you know, with the, with the code amount, if you know what I'm saying. And then down the road, look at enforcement and a lot of documentation, because a lot of these things take time. And, you know, a lot, given the housing market now and the money people are putting into homes and all that stuff, you know, it doesn't take away from the fact that you just can't go out on Route 127 and borrow a driveway up through the creek and say, no, I've got a driveway, because that's not right either. So helping people get those, get those ramifications of, of construction and code issues in place, working with them to maybe work with state authorities or whatever. I mean, Russ would know better than me how far that goes out there, but I think there's quite a wide ruler as to how you can stretch that to help people versus enforce them and make enforcement your last, you know.
That's usually, it's been our.
That's very nicely said, because that's exactly how I feel. We want to work with everybody, not, yeah, we don't need to, like you said, the.
I, I mean, we.
And it's going to be fair.
There's a situation.
One, it doesn't, you know, because that happens, it's easy, it easily can happen.
You can't, you can't, good old boy, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna be fair and consistent with everything.
And then the other thing that's a reality is we have to be mindful of how much money we have in the budget.
Exactly.
Right.
You know, it's, this isn't a forty-five, fifty-dollar an hour job.
No, and we only have so much money.
It's also not a forty-hour week job.
No, not at all, no, I know, and it's funny that you talk about how many hours, that would be something that would, maybe what would be nice to know next time, to thinking about how many hours is, what, what, what have, what have you seen for where we feel like we're lacking? I think, I mean, I think I know a few of them, but where we're lacking and how much time.
I think I have a general idea of what I was looking for, because I was kind of putting the position of what I need for help when it comes down to this stuff.
There you go, yeah, because sometimes.
What I'm really lacking in the office when it comes in code enforcement, and a lot of it is that person on the ground doing the investigation.
Documentation, pictures, report writing. You even got to establish a official letterhead report. So if this, at some point, hopefully never does, but if you have an issue where it does get down the road to a court, so, you know, you don't want to walk in there with blank paper. You want town or webster letterhead, code enforcement and maybe we can ask the chief to help us with that, maybe there's some.
We do have a lot of that stuff already, I have a lot of stuff set up.
Yep.
I just, I think the big thing is making sure we have somebody who can dedicate the time to follow up on it and make sure it gets tracked.
I would agree.
And be there.
Yes.
To be the person to represent the town in court and know the case inside out and to work with the people. That is kind of the big piece that's missing.
And it's a whole education too.
Both learned from our former attorney that facts are extremely important.
Oh, God.
You need the facts and we would have complaints or something, people would meanwhile, but the facts that were telling you weren't, wasn't what was happening. So you, if you have this.
You need unbiased facts, how's that?
I like that.
I also need the right information, like Dana's saying, you can't just say there's something happening over here.
Right, right, right.
You need to be specific enough where we can find the violation if there is one.
And you want to make sure that you're, looking at it from a ten thousand foot view, I perceive, we want to make sure that we're in alignment. With the Hampshire Municipal Association and their training and other organizations that deal with the liabilities, so to get the person trained, he or she gets trained and get, you know, get some understanding, like we're sitting around the table talking about Webster, you're talking to other communities and have trained in some of their challenges they're facing. So I know, and I, I took a quick look online, I guess there is a training through the Hampshire Municipal, Dana knows more about that than me. That, you know what I'm trying to say, this, you take, to answer, to answer your question about how much, you know, there'll be a start, startup, you know, in front of that person.
And I also have the book on it in my office, if you can.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
I think, I think it's really a good move forward for the town and obviously, when you. And obviously, when you end up in court, going to court, this costs a lot of money, and it's not, it's not the money, that's the important thing. But yet, you wanna spend it wisely.
Right.
And I have worked for other towns that I have gone, and I thought I had a great case, and, you know, I didn't win. And, you know, I thought for sure I was, you know, you gotta really.
And the goal is hopefully never to get to that court.
And that's the goal, and that's exactly.
No, I agree with you on that.
But yeah, get on, get on the same page.
And I think people, most people appreciate the help.
Yes.
Absolutely, when you don't feel like you didn't understand or know, and somebody like you, Russ, who's going to be cordial about. You know, there is nothing worse than when you go in and you ask questions, and you get to me to feel stupid, so. And that's, and we, we're, we're here, that's part of your job, and sometimes.
Somebody comes, I'm like, we have that, oh, let's figure it out.
Yeah, right, right, because, because I think the big thing is, it's never, it's never good to, you know, they also have to understand that you're not, don't shoot the messenger, number one. Number two, in not shooting the messenger, you're gonna do anything you can do to help them, because that's what you're there for. Not to say, you go figure it out, but do it right, or the new dude's coming after you, that type of thing.
I wanna help a person come into compliance any way possible. If that means they have to go get a permit, or they have to go see the ZBA, and maybe get business approval, and then go through site review.
How to get there.
And talk about how to set it up.
And them to realize that isn't, your job is not to go after them, your job is to help them. And I guess I would just say to you, 'cause just dealing with towns over many years, doing different things. Sometimes, the abuse you get back creates a hard person, you know what I mean? And so, I just wanna make it clear that if you ever feel like there's, you need that stretch, or whatever, because I do think just 'cause one person's really not the most pleasant to work with, doesn't mean.
Is we have really supportive office, and I need a good stretch.
Yeah, okay, good, well, you know what I'm saying, and I've, I've just been there, but I also have seen it from the other side, where that poor person's been working with the public for like twenty years now, and they've just, they've heard it all, and they're, they're just, they're done being helpful.
Well, that's when you, that's when you need to like, take a look at yourself, you know, people say that.
But you know what I'm saying, right?
Well, yeah, that's, that's why every ten to twelve years, I've changed careers.
That's my problem, I'm going home and I'm gonna say that right now.
No, don't get me wrong, I, I'm supporting you, I, what I'm trying to say is that, in that profession, in that profession. Not in private, but, and in private business too, but I'm just saying.
No, I agree with you.
In that profession, I've seen my highlight of my career, and now I've started to see my twilight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Saying to you is, is that you reach a pinnacle, and you say to yourself, I'm no longer effective as I want to be. And it doesn't mean you're not effective, it just means that you're not as effective as you could be, does that make sense?
Absolutely.
And I, and I think, you know, it doesn't mean you're bad in anything you're doing, it just means it's time to go. And, but anyway, I, yeah.
I like it a lot, nope, I agree.
I will say that I knew that that was a thing that could, could happen. I, I've had some curt interactions with various planning board or land coordinator positions in the past. But more recently, I've gone through a couple things here with our land use coordinator and, and planning board. And I've also gone through some things with a different towns. Land use coordination, planning board, board, and zoning board, to try and help some other people that I know work through the system and do it the right way. And their town doesn't want people to go do things. And our town is very, well, you should do it this way if you're gonna do it. You can go at it this way too, here, let's help set that up, and so.
I think that's the difference between me working somewhere and somebody.
Yeah, we've, we've been so much better at that than, than the other town, it's, it's a testament, and that's one of the things that I, I love about you, and
Absolutely, second that.
Like about the volunteers that we have on our boards. Generally, they're here in the community, and they want to help our community, not just find a way to say no.
Or have a private agenda.
Very lucky, we have excellent volunteers, so.
And I would agree with that.
I do think it answered your question, though, right?
And you're nice, really?
When this person gets hired, they'll need, because you're gonna be going to people's homes and whatnot, who are you, Johnny, come lately, or Suzie come, you know what I'm saying? They're gonna need to have an official ID that they wear, or can show to people, you know, I'm the code enforcement person, I'm, this, I'm, you know, I'm Dana, or I'm.
You can look something up.
You know what I'm saying, and, but I also think it entails other folks, it entails Dana, and it entails all of us as a board, yourself. It entails the fire chief, I mean, the road agent, there are so many code enforcement issues, I would assume, from my ten-thousand-foot view. That need collaboration before you do any moderation, if you know what I'm trying to say. So anyway, so much, you know?
Yep.
I think we've had the point.
We can beat this stuff.
All right. So, do you need anything from us before developing that, or is that something?
No, I was gonna come up with a job description for the next meeting, and then, then you guys could review it, I'll give it to, Dana can give it, your back, or or I could send it out even ahead of time.
Yeah, I'd like to see it before.
And then you could take it, take a look at it and make comments on it, and then we can go from there. And then I can also maybe put in my ideas for what the hours would be.
Please, yes, because you're gonna know better.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously gonna be flexible, depending on what's going on, but.
Perfect.
Sweet.
Yay.
Anything else to insert into our agenda?
No, I, I don't think so.
So that brings us to public comment, we do have a public this time, would you like to comment on anything?
He must have a comment.
I, I, I don't have a comment on what was said today, however, on Saturday a gentleman stood up and tried to insert a warrant article that didn't exist concerning the taxation on seniors. I couldn't comment on anything, because I don't know what's in existence now. Does anybody, could someone please point me in that right direction?
I'm the person to go to on that one, because I'm the one that handles all of that, so what do you wanna know?
Where can I read what's in, in the books right now?
Town's website, it's on their assessing, and they'll have a list of the tax credits. In order to qualify, you need to be at least sixty-five or older currently, it's, I think it's twenty-five thousand for a single person, I think thirty-five for a married couple, and I believe your assets can't exceed a hundred thousand. I would have to double-check that one, I'm not sure on. And that is something that's on my radar, and it's been on my radar for about a year and a half now, and I would ideally like to get to the point where we could at least adjust it to match current inflation, I think.
Your home doesn't count in that asset.
Really?
But that would be up to town.
Yeah, unless, if you own two homes, then it's a different story.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
The home doesn't count.
Home doesn't count, and your car doesn't count.
So the other end.
Your primary home account, and car, right.
Correct.
The other end of that, and that's a good question she put forward, 'cause I didn't wanna, buddy, I've spoken enough tonight, I'm speaking now. Um, I think the other end of that, and I'm sure you're, part of what you're saying is, how does that affect the tax rate? And how does that affect the taxes we're receiving to the town? And then, we have a lot of new families moving into town, which that doesn't affect.
Right.
And how's that affecting their tax rate, and is that attractable to our community? I mean, looking at both ends of the community, and I think what we need to, we really need to think, I, I think what you need, I would be doing is is finding out some of those numbers, you know what I'm saying? I, I know you're doing that, but I mean, is it a good mover, isn't it? Do you know what I'm trying to say? And, and if you, if your assets are over that, how does it affect that? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
The ballots, the ballots.
And the, the reason why I brought it up was personal, in terms of, my wife runs the food pantry. And we're always looking to help people find ways to lessen their burden. And if we can send them to someplace where they can get an oil discount, or, or lessen their burden from taxes, that would be nice, so. Just thought.
Yeah, so if you just go to the assessing, and then on the left-hand side in the buttons, it's property owner tax exemptions and credits.
Okay.
And I believe the state also issues an exemption to low-income people, or low-income seniors at about this time of year.
Yeah.
For exemptions for, I think, some of the school taxes.
It's a portion, it's a formula that they use, they have to apply for it every year.
Every year.
John's question is a very valid one, yes, it does affect it, yes. And while it's a very, I think it's a very good program, we, our tax rate's not affected a lot by it now, but basically, and this doesn't, I don't mean it to sound the way it sounds, but basically, other people are paying your taxes when you have these exemptions, because.
Well, that's kinda what I did, you're saying what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. Whether it's elderly, veterans, blind, deaf, which we don't have.
So obviously, if you had a very high limit on income or, or assets, it's gonna really affect, you know, and, and people over sixty-five. Which is, it's a fact that we have many people over sixty-five in this town. That they would qualify, and you've got the young families starting out that are struggling to pay the taxes, so I mean, you know.
Well, you, you see where I'm going.
Yeah, I do.
There's a balance, it's like.
Publicly, please let me say, I have every great deal of respect for the seniors in this community, I am one of them, but I'm, fortunately, we're very fortunate, and there are some that aren't so fortunate, I know you see that. And I'm kinda trusting in yourself, who, you know, you're the mathematical wizard here, as to how that will all balance out. You know what I'm trying to say, how you come up with a great.
So one is it struggling to help all the others?
Point man, point man, yeah.
Right.
I, I appreciate being seventy-five and getting all the money you can, but it's got to be balanced.
Point is, is to balance it, so the world goes.
People that can't be that fortunate need to have that, you know what I'm, you know what I'm trying to say?
I think the basic thing about the, the difference a little bit with the, with the senior side is, and this is, this is bothersome you know, right from this town to all through the state, you know, like, I, my parents were fortunate enough to have a second home on a, on Great Island. Now, this island in Sonopay was family, family, family-owned properties that went way back generation after generation, and unfortunately, or fortunately to some people, they can't afford to keep it because of the fact that, you know, you become retired and you have a fixed income.
Yep.
And that's, that's the hardest balance, I see, because, because you see, you know, or, or like my in-laws, which I've, you know, since passed, because my husband's parents were older, but, you know, he served in the war, and he, you know, worked for public service, and they were living on a fixed income, and all of a sudden, property taxes, 'cause you get all this, everything's raising. Now they can't afford it, and it's not 'cause they didn't plan, it's not 'cause they didn't work hard, it's not 'cause they didn't, you know, so that would be my, that's my biggest, where you feel, and then, then you have the young couples coming in, and oh my god, I can't even imagine having to be that young couple.
There's the plights that some of these young couples are facing.
Scary.
And, and, you know, and this town's no exception, we've got people moving in here, young children going to school that have needs, and I mean, I, I don't, I'm not trying to get off on a rant here, it's just that.
It is a fine line.
Agreement with you totally, but I need, I, I wanna see how, as a good community, we can balance that. I'm not sure that the proposed balance is the best balance, does that make sense?
Fair, yeah.
Is that fair?
The, the thing I'll point out is that the intent of the elderly exemptions is not to capture every elderly.
No.
It's to help the, the bottom barrel of those, so that they can stay in the house.
Right. Great way to see it.
Even though they may have planned their little hearts out, but with the way times have changed, that plan went out to the, to the wolves.
Why you see with the elderly exemption, that rather than saying we're gonna put like a hundred, or a two-hundred, or a five-hundred dollar credit on it, like is often done with veterans. They say, we're gonna take this much of the assessed value off of your taxation. And one of the reasons for that is that affects more than just like the municipal. That affects how much they pay towards the state, how much they pay towards the school, and all of that. But of course, it's not really taking that assessed value off, it just means that we're paying for that amount of assessed value elsewhere.
The rates being adjusted.
And that's also why it goes up in the ages, to deal with, for example, the fixed income. So at sixty-five, it was sixty-three thousand, and at seventy-five was seventy-six thousand. That was removed from the, the, the assessed value before taxes were, were applied. That being said, yes, the, the income amounts, for example, a married income of thirty-four thousand dollars doesn't go very far. And so maybe that should be updated to some degree. The the, the, the challenge, for example, with what was presented, if that were to actually be the article. Which I think he said around a hundred thousand for, for the income. The, the challenge when do, there's actually a couple challenges, but one, yes, we have a large elderly population, and so now, if, let's say, half of our population now qualifies. Everybody's taxes are gonna go up probably an extra third to half of what they've got, in order to help the, that set of people, and then they're really not gonna end up paying much less in taxes anyway, because so many people are on it. And so that doesn't really help the people that the elderly exemptions are supposed to help.
We were talking about that exact problem earlier today.
The second.
Very diligent, actually, real, yeah, you're right.
The, the second thing that most people don't realize when talking about the elderly exemptions is that it requires both the person and the town to enter into agreements where the town now has full copies of what all of their assets are, what all of their income is. And to continue to track that, and be provided it, and especially in today's cybersecurity realm.
So, we don't keep those records, we verify those records, but we don't keep them.
But you're gonna have to keep getting them.
We do have to keep receiving.
And so, anytime that something is sent, et cetera, it's not like, it's not like an email doesn't get found that was supposed to be deleted, or something of that nature. So, these are the kinds of things that you have to consider, but also, in going down that whole path the town kind of does have to have information along those kind of regards. Because then, if not everything was presented in order to get under the income cap, but they actually had other income, they just didn't tell you about. Now you have other issues, now you have court and litigation problems, and now you have to deal with proof. And, and all kinds of other additional challenges. Whereas, for example, a veteran's credit is, you've proved you're a veteran, here's your credit, we're done. And so, there's a lot more burden on the town and the staff in order to do the elderly exemptions as well. I wish it, I wish it were a lot easier to, to just say, but again, especially when you're starting to delve into like incomes, and what do you own, and where is it, and can you prove you don't own anything anywhere else? That sort of thing, it starts to get really burdensome really fast. And so, yeah.
If I could say, I, I worked for the state for way too many years, twenty-eight years, in anytime a, a bill is out there to be pondered about, they would have to have a fiscal impact statement. And in fact, with something like this, if we were to put a warrant article or some kind of article together to change these, I, I think it would be very helpful to show the fiscal impact on the town based on percentages, if, not, you know, how many people are in it right now, but if certain amount of percentages, this is what's going to happen to your tax brackets. So, people will have a better idea of what they're voting on. It could get ugly at a town meeting, because unfortunately, you'll have people who are just let's just say, it, it could get ugly, however, I think it, without that information, people can't make a true.
Exactly.
Vote.
Education, education.
And we don't really have that information, so the closest we could do, I think, would be to look at the last census and what people self-defend.
What I was thinking, I would look at the census, and I would see what numbers were. numbers we're talking about, put in that age group.
Or maybe another actuarial model that would be more applicable to the town of Westmore, not.
And again, it'd be very hard to be point-on accurate.
Yeah, yeah.
Just being asked.
Sorry, I didn't mean to open up a whole can of worms.
Came up and I was asking the same question as you are, you know.
I did receive an email from that gentleman today who's very interested in it and, um, I, I explained to you how he would get something on the warrant and I'll work with him as well, 'cause I, you know, it's a little early to do that now. But as far as, he has two ways to get something like that on the warrant. He can convince you as the board to put it on. Or he can submit a petition with twenty-five signatures, which I would imagine would be doable. But as I was also thinking, how I was gonna, how I would figure out how it would impact taxes.
And have some town talking points. Maybe Russ puts together ten important town talking points, as you're both saying. As to the pros and the con, five pros, five cons, you know, and.
You know, people, even the person that's looking for it not, totally understands what the effect is on the whole thing.
I used to do what Russ does and people would come and apply and this is, these are larger towns and I had many more applications than what Webster has. But I knew they weren't telling the truth.
Why? 'Cause you drove by and saw them.
So they drove up.
Yeah, right, I live in a shack.
See the boat out on the lake, you know.
Right, right.
And I, and then if you need it, it's great. I think it's a great.
Well, that's what it's supposed to be.
I was telling somebody a story the other day and I mean it with the deepest sincerity in my heart, not to go off on a tangent here. Well, as the chief of police in Bristol, there was a lady, and I won't mention her name, but I had a great deal of respect for her. She was at every meeting, every town meeting. A very big voluntary recipient to the, recipient to the town. And she came up to me one day, she said, Johnny, I need to tell you something. I never was chief, I was Johnny to her, knew her since I was a little boy. And she says, you know, she says, Bristol stops right up there at that bridge. And she, lifelong resident of Bristol. I said, well, I, I, I don't, I'm gonna use a fictitious name. I don't understand Jenny, what you mean by. She says, well, she says, all those two, three, four million dollar homes up there, they're not Bristol, those are out-of-state people. I said, do you enjoy your tax bill? She said, well, yes. I said, you need to think about that, 'cause they're paying you taxes. And you know what I'm saying? Sometimes it, no matter what community, and you were a hundred percent correct about your lake home, because that's all family over there, if you know the region, a lower value, and it's changing quickly. So, not to go off there, but you know what I'm saying? It's a changing dynamic in any community. And I think we need to be, as we've all said, very careful as to how we balance that. You know, for everything.
For sure. Thank you for taking the pressure.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that.
Okay.
Right. Where are we at now?
Uh, so that was our public comment, which moves us on to motions and approvals. Do we have various approvals and stuff to sign?
I have several things for you to sign and soon as I find them, I will give them to you.
What'd you do?
This is a letter of enforcement that Russ has prepared.
That's supposed to be the first friendly letter. Hopefully they make it as friendly, 'cause some people have said that they come off as not so nice, but I try to make them nice.
I have to say what you have to say.
That's also true. That's why I try to make them short until.
I think you said it. I don't know how you could say it any nicer.
That's.
But I, I, oh, that's just me. And I'm usually, oh, let's be kind.
Briefly looking through the minutes, um, reminds me, uh, you were going to look into, uh, if it were possible and how to put the FEMA flag map or change on the website.
They're already on a page.
On the main site.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I can even show it to you. I think I already did.
Uh, I know you showed them to me when I was in the office, but I didn't know that.
This is something for, um, Marlo and Dave to sign. I, I, I caught Dave the other day. And that's the warrant that goes to the DRA, which is the same warrant that was on our warrant.
Same warrant that was on the warrant, it's on the warrant, it's the warrant.
We're warranted, there's a warrant.
This is the unitile bills that Dave always enjoys making.
Just imagine the size that they would be if we didn't have to sell it our way.
I know, I know. This is a change in, um, an hourly rate for, uh, the deputy town clerk. Mary waited until after the town meeting for that. And I believe she had spoken to you.
Oh, yes.
And do you have the date for when that was, or you don't want that up?
As far as when she was here, I don't know off the top of my head, but I'll put it in.
Very professionally collaboratively written. Nice to see you quoted, yeah, I suppose.
This is Mary.
But it was very.
Very, very.
And that's within your two and a half percent increase.
And all of a sudden, Marlo has implemented a, uh, wage freeze.
Oh, and I forgot to bring up the checks on Marlo.
Geez, damn, I mean, how many years already?
I know, I know. Um, so this is the manifest.
Oh, this is a special one. It's two pages.
Must be a lot of checks in there. And if you liked, I could be down.
Clearly, they're writing too many.
Yeah, we always are.
We're gonna have to fix that problem.
A lot of it's from the, from the election.
From the election, yeah.
Oh, and the criminal records, ah, 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 it's like. School, do we have to?
Well, they could use the cash.
What's this one, Dave? I'm sorry.
This is the payroll, um, the, the, uh, council payable manifest.
Oh, I see, okay.
Not the payroll, but there's a lot of election people with the school payment.
And this is the payroll manifest.
This is the one I really, you know.
And I'd like to thank you all for depositing money in my bank account. It's very nice.
Oh, hey, great, that's wonderful.
There's two invoices with, uh, Swazian, when are those coming?
Um, I, I believe that she purchased food for the election.
Oh, okay.
Jean, Jean Swazian.
Yeah.
Yeah, people took out the budget.
I, I remember.
Because it makes sense to give them coffee and a little bit of snacks during the day.
Two propane and invoices, so I assume they filled both here and the safety building?
The propane?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Thank God it's gotten more bricks.
My first experience, that's nice to see, 'cause you can see very clearly what's being spent.
Yeah, I usually.
Usually I have the little, I like to look.
Bring the actual bills up, but I forgot.
Now you're putting me closer to you. That, see, you were safer when I sat over there.
Maybe next time. Thank you. Um, this is Timber Cuts, Russ?
Timber Cuts, we got one. That's a big one.
Dana's gonna have to invest in shin guards.
I guess. Did you wanna take that now, or do you want me to give it to you tomorrow?
Give it to you tomorrow. I think it's safer in your folders. I didn't bring a folder with me.
So I see what you mean by form letters. That's good, that's great, that's a great format. It's good format for form letters.
And then we have a separate one I can show you.
Yeah, no, I just.
The more formal, it gets more formal the further on.
Well, it might have to, but hopefully heathens will be taken, so.
Like I said, I don't think it's impossible to resolve it at this point.
Right. Organizations sometimes creates a solvability factor too.
Or if they wanna operate a business and store their equipment there, that's fine too. Just go to the ZBA. It doesn't cost us any money. I've never seen the ZBA deny anything.
Yeah.
So, well, I think there was once or twice.
And they can propose an organization as to how you, how you place things.
Place things, well, that's kinda how it works, is the ZBA approves the exception. And then it goes to the planning board and they do the setup for the site plan, where everything needs to go. And then they approve that. It is a process, it just takes time.
Right.
Complaints.
So they didn't have any pulp or biomass chips or anything that they reported?
I think there was a lot of, I have to see the bill.
Well, I mean, I know, I can see that it's.
They had a couple tons of something down there.
Yeah, but that.
But I don't know, I don't think it was, trying to remember.
So they must have left it while in the woods, I'm assuming? 'Cause there was five hundred thousand port feet, then.
There was something down in that second category, that's why I wanna look at the bill. There was a significant amount in that, unless I've given you.
Well, and maybe I'm looking wrong too, Russ.
That's why I wanna see it.
I still, I don't really have my glasses with me.
I can hold it over here.
I know.
There's the high-grade biomass chips. There's thirteen thousand tons of biomass chips.
All right, where did, where did I add it?
It's right down in this section.
Oh, okay, maybe 'cause it's overplanted.
It's hard to see 'cause of the colors in that form too, I'll make the color set up.
Okay, so that's what they reported then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, perfect.
I remember there being a bunch of it.
Yeah, but I guess I was thinking it was more in where the Stumpage, see, Stumpage.
So it's separated out by like the, the really nice woods up top and then the kind of.
Oh, I know why I got confused. Stumpage Valley of Courts, but it's 'cause it's tons, so it's over there.
Yeah.
Got it.
This is why I have the logger.
Well, I was, that's gonna say, she, she thinks it's good, it's good.
That's why I give her all the backup too, so she can see it.
Thank you. When you're done signing it, let me know.
The other thing I gotta be careful of is the rates, 'cause I always check the rates before I make the bill.
Well, because, yeah, that's all over the freaking map anyhow.
I agree.
And I don't know how you do that, to be honest with you.
Also put the dates of when I took the rates on the bottom of the bill.
Totally fair, I.
I'm not required to do that, but I do it because I want the logger and the person who gets it to be able to see when I took the.
And even how they come up with it. I know how they come up with it and it's like, all depends on who you are.
So it's the two in this league.
And it feels like double, double, double taxation anyways.
So educating, educate me on this, just quickly, what is this?
This is a timber tax bill. It's for a state law.
Okay.
Were required to build for a certain timid, Marlo could probably explain the reasoning behind it. But basically, the state gives us this form, we, the loggers have to report it to the town.
Okay.
And then we get a portion of the money and I don't think the state gets any.
No, the state doesn't get any money.
No, the town just gets.
I get it then, okay. Are you comfortable with this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, she thinks there shouldn't be one, but.
Right, I know.
I didn't, I didn't ask that. I know the answer to that question.
You grow corn, you cut it. But I think the timber tax really became something, I learned this not very long ago, which is kind of interesting. You are in current, you, you have your land in current use, so you're paying like hardly anything for taxes. But you're growing something that is worth value, right? So, and you can do cuts and make quite a bit of money. So that kinda makes sense. They wanna still get their money for the, for the town and the property. I think the problem, it, like any rule or tax, it goes to the point where when we go in and clear somebody's house lot, I'm, I'll be made charged in six, seven thousand dollars and they're gonna pay a hundred and fifty dollars in tax on trees that they shouldn't.
Well, given the tariffs, domestic logging operations, I think right now should be very, very popular. Things that we need to be concerned, no, I'm being very sincere. You know, I, I don't know where that's all going, so I mean, you need to be supportive of it.
Yeah, well, should be supported, Moses, for slums.
But you know what I'm trying to say, yeah.
Oh, God, don't I, John, yeah. I, we just lost twenty-five percent of our business, but anyways. What we do, not, it's not all logging.
Right. Does that cover all of those?
It does.
And that leaves us with minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes, which there were several.
Wasn't, yes, so I'd prefer to the two of you.
Looked good to me unless you found something that you remember, 'cause.
All right. Uh, so I would move to accept the minutes as written.
I second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have anything? Oh, you wanted a.
Well, I think we discussed if we're gonna be doing more of the goal-setting at the next meeting, we can do that at the next meeting.
Wait till next time.
I just, we have some time now, if, if that's.
It would be kinda nice to have
Are you prepared?
The police to be there, 'cause they're, and the fire department.
Okay.
What's the topic? I'm sorry.
Cybersecurity.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I just don't wanna discuss our plans on YouTube.
No, no. But I think, I think part of that needs to be building security too.
Yeah.
As you know, some professionals in town have brought up some concerning points about physical security, which if that gets violated, then the IT security becomes an issue.
All right. In that case, I would move that we adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-five.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not quite.
Welcome to one of the quickest meetings.
Yeah, right, John, huh? Yeah, yeah, you can come more often.